You the official?
I think we're good.
We're on. Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, March 13th, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on cable, channel eight. Would all like to rise and say the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next. Does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda item tonight, items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann to my left, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody in the audience have any comments that would not be included on our agenda for tonight? Thank you. Okay, I will ask a public comment at each hearing tonight. We'll go to the public on every single application. If I, for some reason, I forget, please speak up. I hope that I don't. I anticipate not, but feel free to speak up. But I will go to the public audi- go to the audience every single application. So next, sitting on the first, I guess it'll be, so, one, two, three, four. Yeah, we're all here, right?
Yeah.
So there you go. So it'll be our five full-time members. So Charlie, would you like to read the first hearing, please?
Certainly will. Continued hearings for March 13th, 2024. Excuse me. Eighteen Nishoba Road, owner Ili I Ilin requests a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 360-square-foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 105, Mashpee, Mass., continued from February 14th, 2024, at the request of the applicant.
Sir?
Good evening. I'm Ili Ilin, and I'm here third time, I believe. So the last hearing, there was a question about opinion of the conservation on the project, and we checked with the conservation. So basically, they mentioned that they're all good with the project because the negative determination was issued. So that question cleared. All other questions from the previous meetings as well cleared, as a modification of the plan and the lot coverage area, those kind of things.
Okay, Charlie, could you read everything? And thank you, sir, by the way. Could you read in the record anything letterwise that we read even last time, just to bring the board up to speed?
I got the board of health, I mean, conservation one right here.
Perfect.
Regarding eighteen Nishoba Road, ZBA Andrew McManus, Mashpee, Mass. So hi, Mary Ann, there are no requirements from Concom. The applicant has received a negative determination, AKA an approval, on the proposed project, and it is thus good to go from Concom's per sector. Sincerely, George.
Thank you, Scott. Charlie, do you have anything? I'd like anything that we even read in before.
Board of Health, and I'm not sure whether it was read. It may have been, but room over garage should be fourth bedroom. Septic is designed for four bedrooms. House to remain four bedroom. No further comment.
So if you were to make a motion, make sure you include that, please. Anything else about comments from Evan or whatever? Anything else?
Yeah, there's something in planning. Eighteen Nishoba, I've reviewed the revised plan. The plan approximately notes that the entire lot is located within the flood zone, and thus has an obvious lot coverage nonconforming. While it is not my preference to list lot coverage at 100%, there is no usable land area to calculate lot coverage. I believe the plan can be accepted to determine the total extent of the nonconforming nature of the structure. To that end, I am satisfied with the revisions and believe the board can vote on the request for a written finding.
Okay, any other letters or comments from any of town agencies? Our hearing none. Anybody from the board have any comments, issues, or questions? Okay, I'm gonna go to the audience. I'm sorry, David, do you have any comments? I apologize. I want to go you first.
I'm good.
Okay, audience, any input and references to applications? Okay, seeing none. Any other? So no board questions, right?
None.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
I got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I get a motion and reference to the application, please? Yes.
Okay. Make a motion relative to eighteen Nishoba Road. Owner Ili I Ilin requests a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 360-square-foot addition to a pre-existing nonconforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 105, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. general laws 40A, section six, number two, site plan. Prepared for Ilya I Ilin, eighteen Nishoba Road, Mashpee, Mass., scale one inch equals 20 feet, date January 17th, 2024, prepared and stamped by John Doyle, PLS number 33589. Three condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health Conservation Department and Building Department comments. Number four, the board finds that the proposed project under 17417 is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing nonconforming structure for use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Thank you. Charlie, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
So I'm gonna turn the next one, which is, all right? So I'm not gonna take the next application yet. I think Jonathan and I are stepping down on the next one?
Correct.
So when that happens, Sharon will take over. That's the chairman. Chairwoman.
Chairperson.
Chair whatever.
Hey, Ron?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna be stepping down on Allen, but I think it's being continued, so.
It is, yeah.
Do I need to leave the room for?
That's your call. I'll always leave it up to.
Yeah, we're gonna continue, obviously.
Always leave it up to the other.
Okay, just letting you be aware.
Yeah, understood. Thank you. There you go. This is the junk pile, I guess. There you go. There you go. And just give us a shout.
Sitting on our next hearing will be myself, Bill, Scott, Charlie, and Bob. Bob, will you read in the next continued hearing?
Yes. Twenty-nine Riverside Road. Owners Russell J. and Anne E. Spencer request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning laws to raise an pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 81, Mashpee, Mass., continued from December 13th, 2023, January 24th, 2024 hearings, at the request of the attorney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain representing Russ and Anne Spencer. They are the owners of twenty-nine Riverside Road, which is located on Saconset Island. With me tonight are the Spencers, who are to my right. Also with me is the project engineer, Tom Bunker with BSS Engineering, who can certainly answer any questions with regard to the site plan, engineering, septic, et cetera. So, as the hearing notice identified, we are seeking a special permit under 174-17.1, that is your raise and replace bylaw, to raise an existing, a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling located in the R3 zoning district. We are seeking to replace that with a new single-family dwelling and detached garage. The existing, the pre-exist- the structure, the existing structure is pre- is nonconforming in three aspects. We are nonconforming to the side yard setback on the northerly side, right here. The existing structure is only 9.7 feet from the property line where 15 feet is required. The structure is also nonconforming as to the 50-foot setback to wetland. The lot itself is partially located within land subject to coastal flooding. That line is right here. Our structure is outside of that, but within the 50-foot buffer. So that is a nonconforming condition. We are also nonconforming as to lot coverage. So again, because the lot is partially within land subject to, land subject to coastal storm flowage, we have to take that land out of the lot area when we calculate minimum lot area and lot coverage. That gives us a lot coverage based on that calculation of 32.36%, which is nonconforming in the R3, which requires 20%. The lot is nonconforming as well as there's only 12,100 square feet of area, based on the removal of the land subject, subject to coastal storm flowage. That being said, the lot as a whole has 31,300 square feet of area. So the total lot, if you look at it, actual square footage on the ground, is 31,300. So with the new proposal, if you take the existing structures, so there's the existing home, there's also cottages towards the water, if you take all those structures, and the lot coverage is under 20% based on the total lot area, our proposal will continue to be under 20% if you look at the project as a whole, as the area as a whole. So it will be going from 12.51% to 18.61% if, again, as a total. Under the bylaw, the lot coverage is going to, from 32% to 48%. So, we are still gonna be nonconforming, however, again, under traditionally what this board has reviewed, and when we've analyzed these projects, when we're looking at the project as a whole, we're still under the 20% of the, the total lot area. We are not creating any new nonconformities by this project. We are eliminating the side yard nonconformity. So that is going from 9.7 to 15 feet. So that is being eliminated. We are not increasing or intensifying the 50-foot setback, the, that, that nonconformity, it's staying exactly the same. We're not changing it. We're not making it any worse. And again, lot coverage is increasing, which is currently nonconforming. As part of this project, we initially proposed an IA system for the house only. That was all, that was required under the Board of Health regulations. However, after consultation with the clients, after consultation with the Board of Health, the applicants had agreed to an IA system that encompasses the whole property. So every single structure on this lot will be tied into the IA system. So that is a benefit to this property. It's a benefit to this site, and it's something that this, this applicant didn't, did not necessarily have to do, because they filed this project prior to the change in regulations with the Board of Health. So again, that is a benefit to this site. I think Tom can explain that if we, that this, with this IA system and all these structures, that the, the nitrogen loading is, is decreasing based on this, and based on what we proposed for septic. So that is certainly an improvement to the property, along with the fact we're gonna be building code compliant, and the fact that we're eliminating one more of the nonconformities. I will note that this project received a negative determination from the Conservation Commission. If you read the conservation notes, they noted that it will be an improvement to existing site conditions. So again, a benefit to the, to the overall site conditions approved by Conservation. The IA system that is going to be hooked up to all of the structures has been reviewed by the Board of Health, and, you know, has got their stamp of approval as well. Finally, I would say that this project is not inconsistent with development in this, in this neighborhood on Saconset Island. On Friday, I did provide the board with some additional neighborhood photos. I provided you Seven Slipper Shell, which was approved by this board over the summer, early last spring, across the street at Bayview Road, Riverside Road, and also gave you some houses down on Saconset Point Road, which is just down the street. So again, what's being proposed here is not inconsistent with what we see in the neighborhood. So with that, you know, again, the board's charge is to make three findings. One is to find that there's sufficient parking. Obviously, with the garage, we've provided sufficient parking for two cars, which is all that's required in, in the residential zoning district. We're not creating any new nonconformities, and we are not. There are no new nonconformities. And finally, that it's not, the project is not gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. So, again, building code, the new structure will be building code compliant. The new structure will be getting an IA system, which will decrease nitrogen loading for the whole property. Three, the Conservation Commission has approved this project. I want to be clear that all of the work on this property, for this project, other than the septic, is taking outside, taking place outside of any resource area. So the structure is not within the resource area. It's not within land subject to coastal storm flowage, and no, none of the proposed work that's right here is within the resource area. The resource area is this line and there, and there's no work proposed. And that is not a flood zone. It's not land subject to coastal storm flowage where this, where this project is being redeveloped. So I just want to make that clear, that we're not proposing any work other than the septic work within the resource, you know, all of it's outside the resource area. So I think that's a benefit as well. So again, I think overall, this project is an improvement to the site, given the elimination of the nonconformity and the IA system that's being proposed, as well as the negative determination from the Conservation Commission and Board of Health approvals. I saw that town planner or director of community development also provided renewed comments or new comments, revised comments stating that, you know, he felt that the board was well within its discretion to approve this project based on what, what we're proposing. So with that, I'm happy to open it up to any questions for either myself or the, or Tom.
Yeah, why don't?
Well, maybe to give a little bit of.
Read Evan's first comment and second.
I'll give it a historical kind of.
Yeah.
The initial review by planning and Evan Lehrer, relative to twenty-nine Riverside Road, you know, get to the, to the substance of it.
That was dated with Charlie?
You know, Bill, I don't have the date on mine. Oh, wait a minute, twelve six, twelve six, twenty-three, I do. Okay, and towards the conclusion of Evan, as you note, to grant a special permit, the board needs to find that the proposed replacement dwelling is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that there is adequate parking. The existing lot coverage nonconformity exclusive of the flood zone increases from 32.36% to 50.7%, with the proposed replacement and cottage number one doubles its potential density. His opinion at that point was that the ZBA should not approve this request as presented because the substantial increase in the size of the structure and the number of bedrooms may reasonably pose a detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. As you know, the floodplain provides us with natural floodwater storage. Developing our floodplains impacts our resiliency to natural hazards by removing flood, flood storage capacity and potentially impacting safety and abutting properties, and is generally inconsistent with the town's vision that has been defined throughout our comprehensive planning efforts and hazard mitigation planning efforts. Given the potential impact to surface or groundwater quality, habitat, wildlife habitat, estuarian systems, traffic flow, traffic safety, waterways, fisheries, and neighbor, neighboring properties, I believe the request for a special permit should be denied on the basis that the board is unlikely to be able to make the requisite findings required relative to neighborhood detriment. The plan obviously accounts for the necessary parking facilities, for the additional bedrooms on the site, however, is not enough, in my opinion, to mitigate the other aspects of this proposal. Please consider in your deliberations the following pre-existing nonconformities. Minimum lot area, setback to water and wetlands, lot coverage if applicable, and side yard setbacks. Subsequent to that, it was presented to the Conservation Commission, and there is a finding relative to the Conservation Commission. Dan Kent's memo of 3824 indicates that the RDA application received a negative determination for raise and replace of dwelling nearest roadside with installation of two IA systems on property lot. Raise and replace with IA septic install is outside of flood zone, but in the 150-foot buffer to the flood zone with one IA septic system within the flood zone was determined project as a whole will improve current site conditions. And then, back to the planning department, and in a memo dated March 13th, 2024, relative to Evan Lehrer.
I got it, if you don't have it.
I understand the Conservation Commission reviewed and approved this project. I maintain my comments submitted for previous hearings, but feel that the Concom's approval puts the Board of Appeals on solid ground to make the requisite findings to grant the special permit. I maintain concern for additional density growth on this property if other cottages are to be redeveloped. However, this application does not contemplate any cottage other than the one noted in the plans. So that's the historical aspect of the planning department and Conservation. Board of Health, relative to twenty-nine Riverside, dated February 27th, plans show four-bedroom house upgraded, septic with IA which is compliant with today's regulations. Board of Health passed new regulations starting January 12th, 2024, that requires all buildings on facility to be connected to the new construction IA septic or placed on their own. New septic plans submitted 2/22/24, making property compliant with IA regulations. No further comment. And there's a memo from, from Dave, Dave Morris, dated 3/13/24. Hello, Mary Ann. The building department has no issues with the approval of this project, but would like the board to condition the proposed ADU be applied for on a separate permit application. I'm not sure that there's anything else that we received.
No, I would like to say that I rode through the neighborhood, circled through three times, up and down every street.
Yeah.
Riverside is the least developed street on the island. The houses are substantially smaller on that street. They're more modest. The larger houses are on the bay side. But on a flip side, as I drove by said house, I could see through the, over to Mon, Mon Muscoy Road, and you could see all the big houses over there. But on this, the road starting from the marina going straight down, all the houses are very modest and small, and there have been remodels down there, which would.
And some newer homes down there as you get like three quarters of the way down.
Yeah.
But they're still smaller than the ones on the other side.
Well, yeah.
But this one is, you know, it's not, this isn't a.
Yeah, no, it's a catch twenty.
Yeah, and I say, it's, and I don't disagree. There's, there's a, there's difference, there's a smattering of different sizes. I, you know, you know, when I, I use the term neighborhood, so I look at Saconset Island as a whole, as opposed to just, just Riverside Road, and certainly there are gonna be houses that are much larger, so.
Like you said, I drove the whole island, but.
Right.
That, the specific section of the island, the houses are substantially smaller.
There's a few more things that didn't get read in.
Okay.
I'm more than happy to.
Oh, sure.
DPW to Mary Ann and Dave Morris. Twenty-nine, hi, Mary Ann, twenty-nine Riverside Road. Riverside Road is a town road. The project includes relocation of the existing driveway. A curb cut permit from DPW will be, will be required. Thanks, pal.
No, I didn't notice there was any curb either, but that's fine. Certainly, if the, if the board were, if the board were.
They call it a curb.
Right. If, if the board were to, if the board were to approve the project, that would be a, a no issue with the condition. I, is, so.
Yeah, there's two abutte letters. But, no, I'm sorry, it's one abutte letter. No, maybe, no, I'll read. Twenty-nine Riverside Road, Carol Oliver, on 12-3, tension, nope. My name is Carol Oliver, and I live at 25 Riverside Road. My husband Carl and I have no objection to and support the project that Russell and Anne Spencer are about to undertake at twenty-nine Riverside Road. We ask that you read into the record on December 13th hearing of the zoning board of appeals. Thank you, Carol Oliver. And then, I've got from Karen Jean. Dear Miss Romero, this is Mr. Romero, but we know it's Miss Romero. We are running to express our full support for the twenty-nine Riverside Road special permit request. Please kindly read this into the minutes at the meeting. Thanks for regards. Karen and Mike Giles, oh, I love Karen Jean. Karen and Mike Giles for Bayview Way. Is that in the butter, Bayview Way?
It's across, it's, so Riverside is, if our property's here, Riverside's here, then here, and then Bayview's here. So it's just on the other side.
No, it's the connector. It's actually directly across the street. It's the connector.
Okay, so they're within, they're three and a feet. They're gonna be within three and a feet, not.
But.
That was it for abutte letters. Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Now, my major concern is all the outbuildings.
Is there, I, there's no, I didn't see a plan for the garage. Do we have a plan for the garage? I don't have, I have building plans for the house, not the garage.
They should have all been submitted.
For the house?
Yeah.
I don't have the garage.
But this was a garage, yeah.
Is there? Mine didn't have.
Yeah, I'd like Scott to.
Oh, yeah, you have the garage. I don't have.
So I mean, the only thing I would say, I mean, we're not proposing any work to the outbuildings. They're not part of this proposal. So, and again, with the IA system, we're actually reducing the overall nitrogen loading to the property. They're, those outbuildings are seasonal, so they're really kinda, they're low-impact, low-intensity use. But again, we're not, we're not asking for this board to do anything with respect to the outbuildings.
No, but you're going from four buildings to five buildings. That's what's concerning me.
Is there anything in the bylaws that you can't do that?
Right.
I don't know, but that's, to me, right.
Not the normal work.
Right. I mean, we're, you're allowed to have a detached, you know, detached garage. I mean, there's certainly properties there that have detached garages. And again, we're not, we're outside of any resource area, you know, with, with both of these structures. And again, and so that's why, you know, when I read, hear Mr. Lehrer's comments about flood storage capacity, well, we're not in, we're not in the flood zone. We're outside of it, so it's not, you know, it's not an issue here. And as far as, again, as far as the lot coverage, traditionally, what we've presented to this board is that if you look at the overall impact for, you know, versus the total lot area, although we are over the thirty, you know, the 20%, you know, for when we deduct, but overall, if you look at it, it's under 20%.
Isn't that how we handled, is that what we did on that confidence on Allen one?
That is.
Yeah, the same.
Right, exactly, exactly. And so, my, that, just my final comment with respect to, to David's comment about the, the permit. I just want to be clear that what, what Dave's saying is, we don't have to come back to this board for a permit. We, because it's completely within David's jurisdiction to approve or not approve the ADU. So it's filing a permit with David, not, not coming back to this board for the ADU.
That was my question, because this is obviously an ADU.
Right, but that's, that's the building department's jurisdiction.
And it didn't come up so, and rightfully so, because of what you just said, but I just want the, I want it in the record that it should be filed.
Correct, yeah. I don't have any problem with that, as long as I know that it's, as long as we're clear that it's filed with David, the building department, not, I don't have to get the approval from the board from the ADU.
So are we taking the.
I don't have to come back for a new special permit on the ADU.
No, 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 well, no.
Right.
I mean, but.
But they have to file with you.
I want to make it, you know, you got. I want to make it, you know, you got, the garage, I have no problem with the ADU. I really haven't even seen the layout. I don't think so. There'll be review on that.
Correct. And we have no, there's no issue with that. No issue with that.
Dan, are you asking to take the whole garage out of it, or just the ADU?
No, the garage is fine.
The structure is okay, but to use it as an ADU?
The garage is fine. The ADU should be a separate issue. It has been. I just thought it needed to be brought up.
On approval by the Building Commissioner?
Should we condition it that the garage is not to be finished as an accessory dwelling?
Well, again, that's not, that's not your purview.
There is a...
No, I don't think, no, not at all.
Okay, because the plans show an accessory dwelling.
Just as I said, condition it that the proposed ADU be applied on a separate building permit application.
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's...
Because we're only improving the structure.
That's what...
That's all right, that's perfectly fine.
You get that, Charlie? I'll make that a separate condition from the ones that are already there.
I'm comfortable with that.
Are there any other questions? Questions from the audience? Come on up, state your name and address.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Paul Colombo, Meadowbrook Road, Chairman of the Conservation Commission and Member of Environmental Oversight. It is correct that the Conservation Commission did find a negative determination of applicability. That was not a unanimous vote, but it was a vote that carried. In the conversations that I had with commissioners, I brought up Chapter 108, the Flow Neutral Bylaw of the Town of Mashpee, because my concern in that meeting was that this particular proposal, and I believe it's exactly what you're looking at, is going from eight bedrooms to 10 bedrooms. According to the Flow Neutral Bylaw, there is a right to four bedrooms on a one-acre lot, and then you need an additional 10,000 square feet for every additional bedroom that you want to have permitted. There are already legally eight bedrooms on this lot, but the request is for two additional bedrooms. So you need 20,000 extra square feet, and it's not there. Now, the Board of Health can give a variance to that, but that variance has to be advertised in a public hearing, and it has to be held, and the public has a right to express their concerns. The concern being that if we violate Chapter 108, we sacrifice a 0% loan rate on all of the SRF funding for the wastewater treatment plant that we're building. That's going to cost the town millions and millions and millions of dollars. So I would urge and caution you to take into your deliberations before a permit is issued that you look closely at Chapter 108, the Flow Neutral Bylaw Mashpee Code, because this project is contradictory to that bylaw as presented. You know, and I mentioned this at the Conservation meeting. If you can take a couple of bedrooms out, maybe one out of one of the cottages or wherever. I mean, that's not for the Conservation Commission to order. But I made those concerns very clear. The commissioner has voted for the negative determination of applicability based on the mitigation that was being offered for the septic system that is not only inside the land subject to coastal flow, but the one outside. And it's a very good plan for the mitigation. It's not so much a good plan for the Flow Neutral Bylaw. So those are my comments for you. I don't have anything else to offer.
Thank you. So, so the bottom line is the Conservation Commission approved it?
The Conservation Commission approved a negative determination of applicability.
Correct.
That approval was contrary to 310 CMR 1001 and 1002, but they approved it. They vote the way they vote.
Right. I guess I'll repeat. They did approve it.
They did not approve it. What they approved was the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, the application of 310 CMR and the local bylaws are not applicable. Chapter 108 is not a Conservation Commission purview. It's a town's purview. And that's why I'm here representing myself, Meadowbrook Road, as a taxpayer. I'm very concerned...
I get it.
...about the 108 Flow Neutral Bylaw.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
What involvement does the Board of Health have relative to Chapter 108?
The Board of Health, the Board of Health agent is really the only person that can give a variance to the Chapter 108 Flow Neutral Bylaw. But that variance can only be granted after a public hearing that has to be advertised. You know the rules, 14 days ahead of time. And there are certain criteria in Chapter 108 that have to be met in order for that variance to be granted. And I don't see any of that that's been addressed, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Want to help to approve it? Do we want to hear the engineer's comments?
Sure.
What engineer?
The engineer's here.
I may...
I'll leave it up to the attorney if he wants to feel like he needs to make a comment on it. I mean, Board of Health did approve it.
Well, exactly. I mean, that's, that's kind of my number-one comment, is that the Board of Health has reviewed this plan and, you know, has approved the project. And I, I'm going to make a statement that's a little bit outside of my area of expertise. However, I, I believe that Mr. Colombo is incorrect in how that is determined on this site. I know that Mr. Seaberry, there's a different calculation that you can do on the site that allows for the 10 bedrooms. And I, I believe that the, I had a conversation with the Health Department about this issue. So I believe that it is allowed based on what, and again, this is, I'm not a Board of Health, I'm not an engineer, but I know that you don't go, you don't have to go just on the square footage of the lot in order to get this bedroom count. There's other calculations that can be done. I believe those were done by the Board of Health, and they've approved it. Again, the Board of Health has completely reviewed this project, so it's not like this wouldn't have been an issue that they would have raised. But again, I think that Mr. Colombo is incorrect. I think there's a, there is a way to get to the 10 bedrooms for this project without, without the need for a variance.
It's not the first 10-bedroom house we've seen come through here in recent history.
Right.
Exactly.
And that wasn't a huge lot either.
Yeah. And the last line of Board of Health comments, new septic plans submitted on February 27th, 22/24. So he had up to date lists.
Right.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that, in my opinion.
Me too.
I'm just one person.
Any other comments?
I'm another person, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, I don't know if we have anything else to read.
Any other comments from the audience?
Just for the record, it's Russell L. Spencer. I don't know if that matters. It says Russell J. I don't, just, because I know it's legal stuff, so.
And it's minor also, but I noticed on the plans had the wrong address, the number, but it was circled and it was a question mark. Just the first page of the, no, the house plans had 39 on my set of plans. Just not that it, I don't know if they all have that.
Yeah, that one, ours has 39.
No.
But it's, page two and three have 29.
Okay.
It's, it's minor, I just want to be noted that it's 29.
We'll, we'll change it and stand it.
Okay. The other two pages are fine.
Yeah, that's, that's...
It's just the title. Because the other two pages...
You need new plans or...? No.
Should be 29.
Yeah, 29, 29 Riverside.
All right, are there any more comments from the audience?
It's 29 on all the other pages.
Yes, correct. Just the front.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to close public comment?
Motion. So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Charlie, are you ready?
Sure, I am, I am ready. I am Charlie-ready is an utter fact.
Okay. How many times have we said that joke?
I am going to include, in the ultimate motion, the two sets of comments by Evan relative to it. Okay, so I'll, I'll go back.
And then Dave's...
Yes.
...slap generation, okay.
Okay, 29 Riverside Road. Owners, Russell J. and Ann M. Spencer request a special permit under 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 81, Mashpee, Mass, to the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Laws 40A, Section 9. Number two, site plan, 29 Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass, prepared for Russell and Ann Spencer. Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet. Date, October 25, 2023. Job number 23035. Revisions, added setback dimension to existing house. Noted areas of noncompliance of proposed house. Clarified coverage note four by TJB, dated December 1, 2023. Drawing number B2291, prepared by BSS Design Engineering and Survey. Number three, building plans date 10/26/23, Dash 29 Riverside Road, front and left elevation. Proposed detached garage, second floor plan. Proposed detached garage, front elevation. Proposed house, first floor plan. Proposed house, second floor plan. Proposed house, first floor plan. Proposed detached garage. Condition on all town department comments read "into the record", including but not limited to the Conservation Department, Board of Health, and Public Works Department. Number five, conditioned on ADU be applied for under separate permit application.
You say building, just building permit application?
I, okay. Do I have the right language?
Um, do you? It's separate, yeah, building permit application. Correct.
Thank you, Chris.
I just didn't want to be in any confusion on what permit we needed to seek.
A building permit being applied for under sep, under separate permitting. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number seven, having reviewed and aware of the comments and opinions submitted by the Planning Department, Evan Lera, under the two submissions, both prior to and after the Conservation Department ruled relative to this property. And six, the board finds, sorry. Number eight, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to the board. Number nine, the board finds under 17417.1, 17433, that the application as submitted is not substantially more detrimental than what existed prior to the removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new nonconformities being created. I think that covered it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
I got a big audience. I figure that's what you want.
Any...
I think so.
Do you need this? The voting's... I don't care. It's unanimous? Yeah. Count there. Alma, Alma Road.
It's continued, so.
That's... Yeah, it's going to be continued, huh?
Should we call them?
You know, Ron and...
They got quiet, they were loud for a bit.
Oh, they...
Yeah, they are.
Forgot about you two. We've already done another one.
We thought you were done. Take a motion to close? Oh, watch this. Welcome back.
You guys have a nice challenge.
Riverside, that one, am I good? It came in here.
Give him my ride home.
I'll get you home.
Get you home, Billy. I'm only down. Charlie, know you are. A one night.
I can get you half now.
That's fine. All right, we all set to go?
We're set.
All right. So Charlie, would you like to read the next, I believe it's a continued hearing?
I would be happy to. Seventy Alma Road.
Thank you.
Petitioners Patrick and Julie McNamara request a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing nonconforming single-family structure and place it with a new single-family structure on property located in an R-three zoning district and the Papanesse Overlay District map one-one-seven parcel one-six-one, Nashby, Mass. Owner of record Harry F. Selloas and Marilyn T. Selloas, Irrevocable Family Trust, continued from March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Received a letter from attorney requesting a continuance until March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
So do we have someone? Is Chris representing them?
There's a letter.
There's a letter to read in.
Okay. So can someone read the letter in, please?
I can.
Yeah, I'll read it. Uh, let's see. It's from Dunning and Coran, Jerome Bond V. Chairman, Nashby Zoning Board of Appeals. Reference to Patrick McNamara, seventy Alma Road. Dear Chairman Bond, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing rescheduled for March thirteenth be continued to March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, as the applicant will not be appearing before the Conservation Commission until March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you for your attention. Very truly yours, Christopher J. Coy.
Chris, you have anything to say?
No, as my letter notes, this project is continuing through the conservation process. They are before that commission on the twenty-first, so hopefully if things go well, we'll be able to present this at your next meeting. And then, just as an aside, you know, there are two projects at the end of this meeting that have the same exact, same exact issue.
So you understand you have to get signed an extension?
Yes, that's fine.
So can I get a motion to extend? We're extended till what time? When?
March twenty seventh.
Okay. So could I get a motion to accept the letter under the record and to accept the extension until that time, please?
Till moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? And so Scott's not sitting, so Charlie will be sitting in this one. So it'll be the four regular members and Charlie, okay? So all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so just have Chris sign that, be great. Thank you very much. So please make note that Scott stepped down on the voting.
Oh, we all have to sign it.
Yeah. We do. Yeah. This is, this was prepared by Pat. So Marian asked Pat to prepare the actual extension document that he wanted some.
Yep.
So it's the way it is. There you go.
You got the data.
What are you doing?
Yeah? That's real official.
Very technical.
Jim, is Jim okay? I haven't talked to him in a couple weeks.
He's doing fine, yeah.
What's the date?
Thirteenth.
You picked the wrong one to go with.
I know, that was, that was rough.
Hmm.
Charlie?
So sitting on the next new hearing will be our five regular board members. Charlie, would you read Forty Evergreen Circle into the record, please?
Michelle. New hearings, Forty Evergreen Circle, unit number one. Petitioner Mark Conley requests a modification, change of use under one seventy-four twenty-five G five of the zoning bylaws to existing special permits, SP twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-four, SP twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-eight, to allow for a graphic design slash sign business. DBA fast signs are properly located in the I-one and light industrial overlay district. Map nineteen parcel ten dash four, Nashby, Mass. Owner of record, Chapter Closed LLC. Good evening, everybody.
Could you state your name and your involvement, please?
I am the petitioner, Mark Conley, also owner of Fast Signs franchise. My sidekick Kevin is from Commercial Realty Advisors. He was the commercial broker that helped me find this particular piece of property. I also have some backup, Charles Fontaine, who is with CEF Builders. He'll be doing the interior build-out. Michael Enos, who is the production manager and has over thirty years of sign building experience, and also fortunate that Chris is here. He's Nick Pastor's attorney, and he was the principal attorney on the original permit that was designed for the building. So thank you all for the opportunity. You know, we're here, as it was mentioned, to seek a modification to a permit, basically get a business use. I am leasing space. I signed a lease in November of twenty-three, and for approximately seventeen hundred and fifty square feet, which is unit number one, front-facing of the building of four contractor bays that were existing in the building. And then in January, we attended the site plan review meeting. We talked about an exterior sign. After some discussion, we agreed for a twenty-square-foot exterior sign. And then the second piece that was discussed was getting a business use for the business so that I could operate a sign franchise in this, in this area. A couple of things I'll say is, number one is that we've already received over twenty leads for, so there is a great need in this area for these types of businesses, whether it's Mashby Commons or, or, you know, other opportunities that have presented themselves already. So hoping that we can move forward, answer any questions. I guess I will address first off is there was an email earlier today from the chief, and he was asking about the installation of the heat sensors. Cape Cod Alarms confirmed to me today that they'll be finishing that tomorrow. So as the chief had indicated, he will be able to inspect and agree early part of next week.
Is, are you complete?
I am.
Thank you very much. Letters from town agencies, et cetera, please, Charlie. I know there's one from Fire, there's one from Evan.
Yeah, there's one from Chief Thalen, dated three twelve twenty-four, regarding Forty Evergreen Circle. The designed fire alarm system proposed by Cape Cod Alarm has not been completely installed and will not be ready for inspection until next week, three eighteen twenty-four. The system designed is based on the original S-one moderate hazard storage. If there is a change in that use group, the Fire Department requests the building be evaluated and a system be installed that meets Massachusetts Fire Code five twenty-seven CMR one point zero zero and the state building code. And?
The health and conservation are nothing.
Right. I believe that Evan had a comment.
There was one from Evan.
And reviews there.
Yeah.
Right in front of you, John?
I have, I have Evans. I can read Evans.
Yep.
Playing Department, Forty Evergreen Circle. I recommend approval consistent to recommendations of the Plan Review Committee in any subsequent comments submitted by the Mashby Department.
So it seems to me we need to look very closely at Plan Review comments.
Okay, we should break it up now. I want everybody to read it.
There you go. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Well, Sharon's the lady on the board, she wants to start, so she starts.
Oh. Well, the hearing was on January twenty-sixth, I mean sixteen, and I'm gonna, the hearing was specifically on Forty Evergreen. Mark Conley represents the application for this business named Fast Signs that will be located at Forty Evergreen Circle, Unit One. He gave the committee a brochure with some background information about the business and mentioned that the location and building needs square footage, just under eighteen hundred square feet, requirements for his business. There are four bays in this building, and his business will occupy the front bay. He provided the committee with a floor plan rendering the fill-out space. He will be leasing the space from owner Nick Pastor. Bill Morris, Building Commissioner. Mr. Morris describes that this business is considered a Group B, which is a change of use. He does not believe the building has a sprinkler system. Mr. Conley stated that there is no sprinkler system and was confirmed, and that was confirmed by the Fire Department. There are three heat centers, sensors on the top of the building. The actual fireplace is on the front side of the building, and there is a fire extinguisher at the entrance of the door. Deputy Chief Joe Pelletier. Mr. Pelletier stated that if the building is seven thousand five hundred square feet or less, it would not require a sprinkler system, as the open space currently exists. But now there are proposed separate units. There was some hesitation from the Fire Department because of the separate units. Mr. Conley calculated that each bay would be about eighteen seventy-five square feet. Mr. Pelletier stated that what, that what is allowed currently is an empty building, but the Fire Department will have to make a determination with the separate unit bays. Mr. Morris stated that this proposal will require an application with the Zoning Board of Appeals because it's a change of use. It is the Fire Chief's decision to determine the requirements for sprinkler systems. Mr. Pelletier asked if there will be any chemical hazardous materials or barrels stored in the unit. Mr. Enos said no. Mr. Conley mentioned that there are heat sensors on the roof, and he contracted a company to install a drop ceiling that will load the heat sensors. The fire panel is on the left of the entrance door with a fire extinguisher. He is not sure what has been done with the other three units. Mr. Pelletier mentioned that this recommendation to the ZVA would be to have a fire alarm professional submit a design for safety devices, emergency lighting, and fire extinguishers, and where they will be located. Mr. Pelletier asked if there will be any pressurized gas. Mr. Enos said no.
Who would like to pick up next?
I'll.
Jonathan, thank you.
Mr. Morris, Building Commissioner. Mr. Morris asked how much foot traffic will be expected. Conley said it will vary between twenty dash thirty percent walk-ins. We'll mostly be working with clients off-site at their location. There will be no retail. Evan Lera, Community Development Director slash Town Planner. Mr. Lera stated that the matter of zoning requirements, this building was approved for contractor base, and the special permit decision does not contemplate any other uses. The special permit needs to be modified to incorporate the purpose used. Any written decision relative to this request should be a modification to the existing special permit for this particular unit and to add it as an allowed use on the site under section one seventy-four dash twenty-five G five, which is defined as manufacturing, et cetera. Mr. Lera also wanted to confirm that there is no parking-related issues in comparison to contractor bay parking ratio. On a zoning perspective, this is a relatively benign request. There are code complaints, excuse me, there are code compliant items to be handled by the Building Commissioner, the Fire Department, and the property owner for any public safety concerns. There are no other issues with the Planning Department.
Scott, you want to do it?
Sure. Zach Seaberry, Board of Health agent. Mr. Seaberry asks if there will be any painting, neon gases, or heating, heating of pipes. Mr. Conley said no. There were no more comments from the committee. Mr. Lera moved to recommend that the ZVA approve requests for a special permit modification on the condition that the Fire Department is satisfied with the facility sprinkle plan as well as the emergency egress plan, lighting plan, light safety plan, and the parking ratios are verified for compliance. Mr. McManus, second. Discussion. Mr. Seaberry stated that the applicant should include the amount of employees for the ZVA application, so there will be a number of associated with the unit for septic system. Mr. Conley said there will be four people. There is also an ADA compliant bathroom in the rear. Motion moved in second. Mr. Seaberry, yes. Mr. Lera, yes. Mr. Oh, it was all unanimous, unanimous. Other business?
No.
Okay, so are there any other letters? I'm sorry?
Hold on, I thought you were gonna say comments.
Okay. Any other letters that need to be read in the record from any other town agency or board or committee or outside individual?
I think so.
The only one was the Fire Chief.
Okay. So board questions or comments?
Is it gonna be, are you gonna be doing any vehicle wraps or like signage on vehicles on the site?
Yes.
Is that something that was addressed as the change of use?
I don't know. I have some comments too on kind of the same point, yeah.
Has it made it sound like there's not gonna be a lot of walk-ins and that type? But are they, only because I don't know, it's contractor bay. Are they allowed to have vehicles?
Was that question asked? Does anyone know? David, was that question asked at Plan Review? Whether there were any vehicles gonna be on-site and whether they're gonna be worked on on-site, meaning signage put on them?
Vehicle wrap?
Not that I, not that I remember.
It wasn't asked. There is a-
I just don't want you to have a problem down the road if everything gets approved.
Yeah.
You're doing some complaints, and they got vehicles down there and wrapping them and they're all-
And then all of a sudden, you haven't been permitted for that, although I would, I would suspect, question mark, that it is a, you know, an allowed use, because it's, you know-
Contractor bay.
It's a contractor bay, there's a twenty-foot garage door.
But I, you know, it was not asked by anyone?
It just, it just threw me off a little bit when it said they're not gonna do much retail, but it is a retail business still.
It's a business-to-business, you know, B-to-B business, and primarily, we go to site surveys and we, you know, go there and install the signs, and so there's really not a lot of people that are walking into the, to the building.
So if I were to bring my vehicle there and you were gonna put a sign on it, where would you do it? Inside the bay or outside?
It depends on the size of your vehicle, but, but if it's within twenty feet, we could pull it into the garage and wrap it there, and then off you go. It only takes, it only takes, it doesn't take that long.
Takes minutes.
Yeah, I think it's part of the record now.
I just know when I've had my vehicles done, I go to the place I used to go to.
Hopefully you'll come to Fast Signs.
A longer ride, that's for sure. They do it right there. It takes minutes, but it is done on their property, in the parking lot.
All right, you satisfied then, or?
I'm satisfied. I just wanna make sure, I'm just wanna try to protect him that he's not gonna have a problem down the road.
That's an issue.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board in reference to the app? I have one, but I wanna hold my comment until anyone else has to speak about it. So one thing for me is, being that there was a prior special permit issued, I'm wondering if there's anything in that prior special permit that we need to include in this permit, or if there are any questions or issues that need to be dealt with in the prior special permit? Anybody bring that up?
It was, Evan brought it up.
Okay, good.
Right before us, and it's just a modification, it seems like.
Evan doesn't have any.
I'm good. I'm all set. So Mr. Morris, do you have any input in references application?
No, no, it's pretty, pretty straightforward, and, you know, things will be dealt with in the permit process.
Okay. Audience input. Anybody in the audience like to say anything in references application? Okay.
Just a follow-up.
Go ahead.
What percentage of your business would you say you're actually installing signs on somebody's property, somebody's business, and you're not actually doing it right in the building? Forty, fifty, sixty?
I mean, the majority of the work is, we go to that person's business and install a sign.
Would you make it this, at your, at your office?
We could make it at our, at our facility, yes, or depending on the type of sign, the material, we might have some, an outside vendor make it and then ship it to us, and then we would install it.
Gotcha. What are you using for the signs? Is it wood mainly, or?
It could be core plast, it could be PVC, it could be wood, it could be metal, could be any number of things, again, depending on what the visual communication of that particular client would like for their business.
Did the Fire Department go over flammables at all? Because some of this stuff is flammable.
It did come up in the, those comments we read in. It came up about gases and any-
Right, we use environmentally friendly ink?
That, that came up in the comments, in the planning, planning board, I mean, in the view.
And what was the final outcome? I think I missed it on sprinklers. Does it need to be sprinkled or not?
The building is under seventy-five hundred square feet.
I think that there's a question mark on that, though, the way it was read. I think, though, if we were to ask Charlie to make a motion, there's three things that I would recommend that we include, and that would be one of them satisfactory, so. Yeah, and once we get to that, I'll go through the three things that I think should be included in the motion, if in fact he's asked to make a motion. Yeah, exactly.
Stephanie Pelletier made this comment, so what he was expecting.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, yeah, I mean, according to, you know, it is under Mass General Law, in five twenty-seven CMR, it's under the Chief of Police, um, Chief of Fire discretion, but in my opinion, at this time, it does not need to be sprinkled.
I think if we were to ask Charlie to make a motion, this board would ask him. I think number one would be fire comments, that letter, right? He has to satisfy that. He has to satisfy any and all comments in the Plan Review January sixteen twenty-four letter, and he has to have no more than four employees.
Including and not limited to the Fire Department comments.
Correct. So you're all set with the four employees?
I mean, that's what we're starting with, four employees.
Well, my concern is, is that was from a Board of Health comment, so it's predicated, I think, is gallant, et cetera, on your employees. So if you went to five or six, you may have to go back-
Back to what?
To this board, and then back to Board of Health.
Okay.
I'm just telling you that.
Yep.
If you went to five, six employees, you would be required to minimumly go Board of Health and back here.
Just because of septic capacity.
Yeah, and then, but they would be amending this permit again, so those are the three conditions if we asked Charlie to make a motion that would be included in the motion. So, that being said, audience participation, I think I, did I go there? If I didn't, I'm going there now. I think I already went there, and we're going back to the board. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So move.
Second? All those in favor? Can I get a motion to approve the application? And I believe there will be three conditions, minimumly, which would be, number one, the satisfaction of the fire letter dated whatever it is from the-
Condition on final, final of board, all departments.
Yeah, I'm just, I want to be specific. Fire said as a letter, so.
Condition on fire.
Specifically, and not limited to the Fire Department's letter, and Plan Review dated January sixteen twenty-four conditions, and maximum of four employees.
Yep.
I agree.
All right, so if you'd like to make the motion, Charlie?
Is that what it said, four?
That's it, maximum four.
Maximum four.
There you go.
All right, a motion relative to Forty Evergreen Circle, Unit One. Petitioner Mark Conley requests a modification, change of use under one seventy-four twenty-five G five of the zoning bylaws to existing special permits, SP twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-four, SP twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-eight, to allow for a graphic design sign business, DBA fast signs on property located in the I-one and light industry overlay districts. Map nineteen parcel ten dash four, Nashby, Mass. Owner of record, Chapter Closed LLC, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit modification under one seventy-four dash twenty-five G five of the zoning bylaws-
a special permit modification under 174-25G5 of the zoning bylaws and Mash General Laws 48, Section 9. Two, existing building interior fit-out, 40 Evergreen Circle, Unit One, fast signs, construction manager, RJP Consulting Group, architect, John Lister Architects, drawing index T1, cover sheet A1, equipment plan A2, construction plan A3, details A4, elevations and sections A5, reflected ceiling plan A6, outlet locations A7, finished plans. Condition on the recommendations submitted and contained in the Plan Review Committee meeting and conclusions of their meeting dated January 16th, 2024, conditioned upon final approval, uh, by the Mashpee Fire Department, uh, relative to any fire safety obligations or requirements, and conditioned on there being not more than four employees as specified by the Board of Health.
Did you include the plan review dated July, January 1624? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I wasn't paying attention, I guess.
Papers coming back?
So, Kaz, when we're ready, not yet, but you can read 231 Monomoskoy when we're done signing the- Keep you involved, Kaz.
They sleeping?
No, 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 not at all. I just figured we'd give you something to do.
Yes.
That's a good one, Mary Ann, I'm impressed.
Yes, exactly.
It sounds like you're good.
There's a, there's a need, there's no sign place in Mashpee.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure there is a guy-
Where do you go, where do you go to, you understand?
So, Kaz, would you like to read the next new hearing, which is 231 Monomoskoy? Into the record, please.
231 Monomoskoy Road, owners, Richard T. Jackma and Ann M. Wood, co-trustees of RJAW Family Revocable Trust, request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 to allow for a 460 square foot addition in a deck to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in R3 District, zoning district MAP 114 Parcel 98 Mashpee, Mass.
Uh-huh.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, attorney Christopher Corain, representing Richard Jackma and Ann Wood, they are the owners of the property of 231, uh, Monomoskoy Road, and they are seeking a written finding under 174, uh, 17 for approval of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Uh, this structure is located, uh, Monomoskoy Island, which is in the R3 zoning district. The, um, lot is not conforming because it's 10,700 square feet. The lot is partially within the flood zone, so that has been deducted from that calculation to get you the 10,700 square feet. The, um, existing structure is non-conforming in three ways. Uh, the, there, the two front yard setbacks, so there's two front yard setbacks that we'd have to be 40 feet. One is from Monomoskoy, one is from Childs, those are both non-conforming, 26.5 to Childs, um, what do I have to, and 25.3 to Monomoskoy. So, those are non-conforming conditions. The other non-conforming condition is that the existing structure is not 50 feet, uh, setback from the flood zone line, so we are not setback 50 feet from, uh, land subject to coastal storm flowage. What, uh, the applicants are proposing are as a modest addition, uh, to the rear of the structure. This, uh, addition will be in, uh, already disturbed lawn area, um, and the, that addition itself, however, will be, uh, compliant, so it will not, uh, create any new non-conformity to the side or rear yard, it will be conforming to both Childs Road and Monomoskoy, um, but, you know, will continue to, uh, be non-conforming to the flood zone line, but it's not getting any closer than what currently exists to the flood zone line, so we're not intensifying any, uh, existing non-conformity. Uh, the lot coverage, even with the deduction of the flood zone, is under your 20% allowed, so, it's, the current lot coverage is 13%, with this addition, we're going to 17.5%. So, even with that reduction, we're gonna be under the 20%. And then finally, the, um, at last, the last Conservation Commission meeting, they approved the project with a negative determination, uh, that there'd be no, no adverse impact. So, again, it's, this is a modest addition, it's not inconsistent with other proj- other, you know, homes in the area, we're not, uh, creating any new non-conformities, we're not, uh, intensifying any existing non-conformities, and, uh, you know, we're under the 20% lot coverage. And I will say that, uh, because it is, I think this does have to be flood zone compliant, so I think the, the proposal is flood zone compliant as well.
20 or 25% lot?
20%.
So, what is this? That says 25.
Pardon?
No, I don't think so.
No, it's 20%.
Seventeen, isn't it?
Yeah.
What did I say?
No, I'm, you know, I'm saying. I had a table.
Yeah, that's my table, that was an error.
There you go.
It's an error. My mistake.
He handed me a, I was handed a table during this conversation, supplied to us by council, it was 25%.
Yes. It was incorrect, but, no, it is not-
Oh!
But hey, but I would say, it's 20% and we're under 25, we're under 20% so-
Just for the record.
But yes, it's 20%, not 25%.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so, letters read from, please, into the record, you know, someone like to read whatever letters we may have.
Yeah, we have some board of health, uh, comments. 231 Monomoskoy Road, to remain two bedrooms, variance from septic tank expired 123123. Now, I confess, I don't understand what significance that has, if any.
So, you're gonna have to go back to the board of health and obtain either an amendment or something, but if they've-
Yeah, they, right.
If they've already received one of variants, I've had variants from the board of health, I am okay as chair with that issue. But you realize that the, if we were to make a motion, you have to, you have to make sure it's very clear the motion is, is predicated on that issue specifically.
The board of health comments.
That they have to, yes.
And I believe that the, uh, you know, condition upon it remaining a two-bedroom.
Yeah, the board of health works with you very closely in reference to variances, yep.
Okay, a second, um, uh, 231 Monomoskoy Road, uh, dated 3/8/24 from Dan Kent, uh, Conservation Department comments. RDA application received a negative determination with condition for erosion control around oil's pile. Addition in rear of house will be flood compliant and, it says, will was determined to have no adverse impact on wetlands. I'm not quite sure what that means, but-
Will was?
I think it's a typo.
Yes, I think it's a typo as well.
So, was there a determination?
Yes, I'm not gonna determine.
You filed, so you got, all right. So, there was an-
That's the only important.
Perfect, yes.
And we have comments from the planning department. Uh, again, this is dated March 13th, 2024, relative to 231 Monomoskoy Road, uh, comments from Evan Lehrer, uh, and they're not too lengthy. The subject property is improved with a lawful pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling off Monomoskoy Road and Childs Road. The lot contains 10,700 square feet of upland area where 40,000 square feet is required. Side and rear setbacks are conforming, but there are non-conforming front setbacks from the existing dwelling to Monomoskoy Road and Childs Road, 25.3 feet and 26.5 feet respectively, where 40 feet is required. Frontage appears to be adequate when considering the total frontage along both streets. Lot coverage, when appropriately calculated, removing the portion of the lot that are wetlands as defined in Mash General Laws, Chapter 2, 131, Section 40, totals 13.1%, 13% is shown on the plan. The lot being partially impacted by land subject to coastal storm flow has a non-conforming setback to water and wetlands. The applicant proposes to alter the pre-existing non-conforming structure by building an addition of the rear of the dwelling to include a new master bedroom and small deck. According to the board of health, the house is currently two bedrooms and will remain two bedrooms. Presumably, one of the existing bedrooms will be decommissioned as required. The addition will moderately increase lot coverage to 17.5%, which remains under the 20% maximum. Please consider in your deliberations the following pre-existing non-conformities. Minimum lot area, setbacks to water and wetland, front yard setbacks, too. Recommendation, the planning department suggests that the proposed continuance, extension, or alterations proposed would not substantially, uh, be more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the board can grant a written finding. Please confirm that the house is not to exceed two bedrooms. I understand that there is a deed restriction preventing anything beyond two bedrooms.
So, it would seem to me if you were asked to make a motion, that would be also in the contingent, would be the two-bedroom, right?
Contingent.
So, two-bedroom, board of health issue, they have to take care of board of health as far as, uh, the elapsed variants, and any other variants, uh, board of health issue. Board questions?
David, wasn't that one of the plans that the wall came down to make that room not a bedroom?
Perfect, great. Any other board questions? Okay. Okay, so, we have the letters, um, Mr. Morris?
I'm all set, it's good.
Okay. Audience input, anybody in the audience having to say? Seeing, okay. Any other board, no more board questions, all right. Motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Charlie, would you like to make a motion, reference the, this application?
Uh, to make a motion relative to 231 Monomoskoy Road, owners Richard T. Jackma and Ann M. Wood, co-trustees of the RJAW Family Revocable Trust, request a written finding under 17417 and 17433 to allow for a 460 square foot addition in a deck to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 114 Parcel 98 Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Laws 48, Section 6. Number two, certified plot plan with new addition, 231 Monomoskoy Road, owner applicant Richard T. Jackma, scale one inch equals 20 feet, prepared by EAS Survey Inc., stamped and signed by Edward A. Stone, number 28980, Registered Professional Land Surveyor, 12424. Floor plans, job address, 231 Mon- Monomoskoy Road, prepared by JB Designs, date 10/21/23, drawn by JB, scale one quarter inch equals one foot. Page one, proposed right elevation, proposed upper floor plan, page two, proposed foundation plan, proposed lower floor plan, page three, roof framing plan, page four, sheer wall elevations, page five, wall, uh, openings, uh, headers. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the board of health and Conservation Department comments, the comments and recommendations of the planning department, uh, set out by Evan Lehrer, and contention upon the, um, reapplying to the board of health relative to septic requirements.
Septic variants and any other board of health requirements, I would say.
And, uh, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. The board finds that under 17417 and 17433 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or to the neighborhood.
Thank you, and I just wanna clarify, so it'll be the five regular sitting members that will be voting. So, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Enjoy. All right, so, let's see, we'll sign this document and we'll be, uh-
Moving on.
Papers to send back?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think the last two are requested.
Yeah, we, yeah. So, Bob, when we're ready, not yet, we'll have you read the 425 Monomoskoy, not yet, though, please. Stamp, stamp. Sign, sign.
Jesus.
Got it? Okay, um, Bob, could you read 425 Monomoskoy in the record, please?
425 Monomoskoy Road, owners, Mac H. and Lisa White, request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33, the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located in R3 zoning district, MAP 124 Parcel 55 Mashpee, Mass. Received letter from attorney requesting a continuance until March 27th, 2024 hearing.
Counselor, thank you, Bob. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, members of the board, again, for the record, attorney Christopher Corain. Uh, so, this has not, uh, been reviewed or approved yet by Conservation, and it's gonna be at their March 21st hearing, uh, provided that, uh, there's a favorable outcome at that 21st meeting, we'll come see you on the 27th, but as of right now, it has not, uh, finished, it hasn't gone through Conservation yet, so.
We have time, right, Mary Ann?
Yes.
And you understand you'll be signing a document if this board approves that, right?
Yes.
So, I'd like to get a motion to agree to an extension till March 27th per a letter sent to us by Kevin, uh, Chris Gray.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Who's making sure I was gonna be, flying home Tuesday?
Flying back here.
Flying back here.
Oh, okay.
Flying down Monday.
There you go. So, Bob, when we're done signing this, if you could read 14 Capstan, not quite yet, but in a second or two.
Oh, this is different.
You gotta put the date on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Dick call him.
I'm leaving tomorrow afternoon.
Where you going?
Oh, Friday morning. So, I'm staying in Lowell.
It's a beautiful city to stay in, John. Lower, almost as nice as Lones.
It's not as many-
Charlie, please.
It's a beautiful Lowell.
My hometown, please.
It's a really nice place.
Yeah. All the movie theaters.
It's about, it was a great town. Fifty yards from the end of the connect.
Okay, Kaz, could you please read, Bob, please read 14 into the record?
14 Capstan Circle, owners, Robert P. McDonald Jr. and Tracy A. McDonald, request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33, the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming three-bedroom, single-family dwelling, and replace it with a new three-bedroom, single-family dwelling, property located in R3 zoning district, MAP 111 Parcel 101 Mashpee, Mass. Received letter from attorney requesting a continuance until March 27th, 2024.
Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, for the record, attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant. Uh, same reason, we are still winding our way through Conservation, will be heard- We'll be heard, scheduled to be heard by Conservation on March 21. Pending a hopeful positive outcome, we'll be here on the 27th with you.
And you'll be signing if this board approves your extension of the document, correct?
That is correct.
All right. So I get a motion in reference to the request by Chris for his client to come back on March 27 to extend it. All those in favor?
Here, I'll grab that one.
Chris, you can make it.
Bye, Chris.
I can make it.
There you go.
Who city do people work hard to kill and work?
I have to tell you this story. My daughter was talking to me. She presented to me. Hot tub of four-hour presentation.
What town?
West Palm Beach.
Ooh.
Four-hour presentation.
I don't think he needs to sign that.
All discussion on the hot tub.
Well, hey. We may have to change, we may have to change our ways, Sharon. All right. Do I get a motion?
Continue.
Do I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 14, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Okay. I don't have anything for discussion topics, so get a motion to close this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Have fun, gentlemen and ladies.
Good work, ladies and gentlemen.
Ah, what is all this now?
I enjoy conservation.
This your junk, Sharon?